We're on then?
Yep.
We are. Good. That was good timing. Okay, so welcome everyone. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, Monday, June 18 at 5:02 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Bollig?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Steen?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Udro?
Here.
Brinear?
Thank you. So we're gonna go to item four. The board may meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.851E to discuss the TDS buildout and related costs for task order from Rooker and Milkie for field inspections and attorney fees. So we need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Udro?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go in closed session and we will go across the hall.
We're across the hallway, Andy. Sorry, make you sit down.
Okay. We are back live and in action, folks. So the board was just in closed session talking about the TDS buildout and related costs. The board will be hiring Rooker and Milkie to do some oversight and there'll be more information at a future meeting as we continue working on this. So that takes us down to item six, public appearances. Item A from the June 7 planning commission meeting.
Do we wanna go back up to item three?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Jeff. I had an error and still missed it. So item three, congratulations to Public Works employee Dan Schultz on his retirement from the village after 24 years of service, so Jeff?
Yeah. I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Dan Schultz for his dedicated service to the village of Oregon and its residents. On June 22, 2018, Dan will be officially retiring from Public Works following a long and successful 24-year career with the village. Prior to working with the village, Dan worked for Union Co-op Association for 21-plus years as a laborer. Dan's current position with Public Works is under our Village Parks Department where he has been responsible for the care and maintenance of our parks and park equipment. I would like to personally recognize Dan and thank Dan for his many years of service, his hard work, and his dedication to our community. Please join me in congratulating Dan on his retirement and wishing him well in his future adventures and plans.
Okay. Thanks, Adam. On behalf of the board, we wish him well. Okay, now, item six, public appearances. Item A from the June 7 planning commission meeting. Trustee Carpenter, please.
Sure. This is a discussion of possible action regarding a specific implementation plan, which is the SIP, for the Sleep Inn Hotel at 1120 Park Street for a new indoor swimming pool and indoor/outdoor whirlpool. At the June 7 planning commission meeting, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve amending the site plan. I think the owner is here if we want to hear about it. But I would make a motion that we get this on the table, so I would adopt resolution 18-30 approving amendments to the specific implementation plan for property located at 1120 Park Street, which is the Sleep Inn Hotel project.
Second.
Okay. The motion is second. Did you wanna make any comments, Adam? Okay. It's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, I'll summarize and you can... It actually looks pretty cool. We're thinking about having the next planning commission meeting there where it's built. It's gonna be an indoor/outdoor whirlpool work. It's both outside and inside. The planning commission was very... Put Adam through his paces of fencing, noise blockage, lighting going off at a certain time, but I think it'd be something interesting to put Oregon on the map a little bit.
Are there questions or comments? So we have a motion to second to adopt resolution number 18-30 approving amendments to the specific implementation plan for property located at 1120 Park Street, which is the Sleep Inn Hotel project. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. And then item B from the June 7 planning commission meeting. Again, Jeannie?
Yep. So this is a discussion of possible action regarding the Oregon Community Resource Network with the new youth center building at 110 North Oak Street. The next three items are about the new youth center. So the first one is a proposed zoning request to consider the approval of the general development plan and the specific implementation plan. On behalf of the village of Oregon, we are the property owner and the youth center board for a proposed new youth center building. The center will be located at the southeast corner of Brook Street and North Oak Street and will be a 5,952-square-foot multi-use building with parking. So the first item is approval of the GDP. The planning commission recommends this to us unanimously. And so my first motion is that the board by two-thirds vote suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And so since that carried, then I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 18-08, changing the zoning classification of the property at 110 North Oak Street to a planned development district.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Then item number two is regarding the specific implementation plan, and this also passed unanimously from the planning commission. The planners' memo dated 5/31/28 noted that complete design review, including showing placement of trash enclosure and bike parking, will occur at a later date, and the planning commission was comfortable with that, that those would be approved at a later date. And so my motion is that we adopt resolution 1831 approving the specific implementation plan for the youth center at 110 North Oak Street. Second.
Thank you.
So what that means is that they have to come back with an amended SIP, Dan and Randy, to the planning commission, and it's no public hearing, it's just amended SIP back to plan. So if you can try to make the July 12 meeting, they could then be back here on July 23 for final approval. Okay.
All right. And then I'm number three, is the certified survey map.
We got a vote yet, right?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Jumped in there.
Sorry.
Learning from me.
She's moving.
So we have the motion to second to adopt resolution 1831 approving the specific implementation plan for the youth center at 110 North Oak. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. And then the next motion comes unanimously from the planning commission that we approve the certified survey map as presented with the recommendations of the village planners' memo dated May 31, 2018, and the village engineers' memo dated June 7, 2018.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? So we have that. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then last but not least is the approval of the ground lease, and so my motion is that we approve the ground lease conditioned upon a new map overlaying the basketball court and the sidewalks where the new lot lines be attached as an exhibit B. Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, Dan knows that. I lean from Matt's office to try and get over to Dan to get a new map, so we'll get the map before we have the lease signed.
Okay.
I know you are. Thank you.
Anything else on this item? Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the ground lease conditioned upon a new map overlaying the basketball court and sidewalks with new lot lines that will be attached as an exhibit B. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thanks, Jeannie.
Congratulations, everybody.
Did either one of you guys wanna say anything, or did we race through it and we're done?
No, I have to be part of it and things should start coming along really quickly.
And the groundbreaking is next Thursday at 4:00, and we've noticed it for the board and planning commission.
Yep. Okay. Sounds good. We'll look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item C, discussion with Oregon Postmaster Brandy Simmons regarding delivery growth management, T4 tailboxes or cluster boxes. So Brandy, welcome. Come to microphone, please. We'll be all set.
You can grab that wireless one, probably. Is that you, Dan? Okay. Just pull it off. There's a very close one.
Okay. Testing. Good evening. My name is Brandy Simmons. I am the Oregon Postmaster. Some of you probably knew Craig Hansen, and he left about two years ago, and then I took over for him. Recently, the postal service, obviously, Oregon is expanding as a community, and the postal service is trying to find ways that we can be more viable as a business and more efficient with our delivery. And the main aspect of that would be converting what we currently have from the house mailboxes to the curbside mailboxes to CBU units. And the cluster box units, I think you could probably pull one of those up, if you can give me a picture of that. New developments are all going to be cluster box units. Anything that's not final-platted prior to when I started working with Jeff will still will have cluster box units. The ones that were already final-platted will have the regular curbside mailboxes, especially up in the Bergamot District. They had specific, I believe they were copper mailboxes, but they had a specific type of mailbox that they had set up, and so we'll be honoring that. They will use the ones that they have for their developments, and then after that, anything new going in, such as like the Interlochen, the new development on the other side of Oregon Parks, once that phase goes in, will be CBUs also. Then we have Foxville going in, Foxville-Littleiana Terrace. That's gonna be CBU units, and the ones on the other side of, over by the cemetery?
Oh, the Maryhill Edition.
Maryhill Edition. Correct. So those will be cluster box units. Now, for the existing deliveries, what people currently have inside or outside the village, we'll start with the rural mailbox. This is a rural mailbox, and I'm gonna be working with True Value to try to phase out some of the different size ones that they have right now, because our T4 Next Generation is made for larger boxes and packages. As you can see, the rural mailboxes is great for boxes and packages. We can put, we can put multiple boxes in here, multiple sizes. We can still fit the mail in, and they're a nice, large-size box. However, having this inside the city limits, these are kinda unsightly, so this isn't the best thing we would want inside the village. So the postal service has come up with what we call the T4 Next Generation, and that's kind of what we're trying to move into for curbside village delivery. Now, this is an example of the largest one that they have at True Value. True Value doesn't actually have the T4 Next Generation yet, so I'm working with them. There's also Home Depot, Lowe's, Walmart, some of them. They're supposed to have this Next Generation. Now, the T4 would allow us to put a large flat-rate box in there, and it would allow us to put in a medium flat rate, and as you can see with the dimensions, you can put multiple boxes in, and you can also have the mail on the top, you can have the mail on the side, and put different-sized boxes in, which is a benefit to the postal service because then we can expand the number of deliveries we do on a particular route. As it stands, if you have a carrier that has to walk from house to house and deliver house to house, we do have one route in Oregon that is basically all walking delivery. She can only handle about 300 and some deliveries, as opposed to a curbside carrier who can deliver up to 600 or 700 deliveries. If you transition into the CBUs, then you start getting up into the 700 to 1,000 deliveries for one carrier for one route. And as you all know, Oregon is expanding, so as we continue to expand, we add routes to the postal service, we add carriers, and we increase our deliveries. So...
So I think one of the things that, when Brandy and I were talking about this at the very beginning, that I thought, we felt the need for her to come and kind of present this information is as, as mailboxes get replaced within the village, you cannot replace the similar size, what you have there now, with the same kind. I mean, it has to be, anything replaced has to be going to this T4 size, and she's instructed her...
Carriers.
Carriers, excuse me, to basically report that back and say, okay, so, but I don't think our residents understand that yet, that this is kind of, you know, it's not just for new subdivisions or new mailboxes. It's for, like personally, if my mailbox today gets hit by a car, probably after this evening, probably will, I will, I live on Butternut, by the way. But, but no, after that, if I have to replace it, then I have to be replacing it with the T4, which is a much, much larger mailbox, and I just think, just like anything that we've ever done in the village that is change, the more, more we can do to communicate that to the residents so that they know that, you know, this is not a mandate coming from the village, it's not even a mandate coming from Oregon Post Office, it's from...
Growth managers.
Growth managers, which are even regional in our state. And Brandy's, Brandy's expressed to me that her hands are kind of tied on some of this, and it's been kind of a learning curve for us and developers in getting them, because we don't want these cluster box units in public rideaway. We, they need to be in private outlots, like what we've talked about before on some of these subdivisions coming through, because the question is, you know, going back to one of these pictures here, we as a village and Public Works and everything, we don't wanna be responsible for the keying, for the maintenance. If one of these gets hit by a car, you know, that could be $5,000, $6,000 of repairs, and that's not something the village is going to be responsible for, so then it has to fall on the shoulders of associations and that type of thing, which is good when, I mean, you can do that with new subdivisions coming in. You can't just come into Fox Glen East or whatever and just on, you know, all of a sudden try to implement CBUs in an area like that.
Which is why they created that T4 Next Generation, because the mailboxes that people currently have, we're not gonna take those mailboxes away and make a move to a CBU unit. We're gonna allow them to keep the mailbox, we're just going to ask for larger mailboxes because we are quickly becoming a package industry, same as UPS and FedEx. And right now, we're battling UPS and FedEx for a lot of the package manufacturers, the big moguls, to stay with the postal service. So we need places to put the packages, you know, and we have to have mailboxes large enough that the carrier doesn't have to get out at every stop. I mean, we do have routes right now where the carrier is delivering, one particular route has over 600 deliveries, and she's getting out at over 200 houses every day, so over a third of her route every day to deliver a package to the door. And every time she has to get out of the vehicle, obviously, that adds time to the route and it increases the route time and how long it takes that carrier to deliver it, which means we have to cut the routes down and add more routes because they can't, they have to keep getting out repeatedly to deliver the mail.
And the instructions, just to be clear, the instructions that you've given the carriers that if somebody replaces their mailbox with a non-approved T4, they are not to be delivered to?
Correct. Correct. May is our mailbox improvement month, and I did ask carriers to go out and give notices to customers that had really poor, old, rusted, beat-up, dilapidated boxes, which you see more in the rural areas than you do inside the village, but we did ask them to notify customers, let us know, so that we can temporarily stop delivery, give that customer an opportunity to repair or improve that mailbox, order a new one, and then resume delivery again. It does take the carriers' buy-in and customers' buy-in, because the carriers need to be cognizant of that. If, if somebody is moving out, a house is on the market, it's being sold, before that carrier assumes delivery to the new tenants, they can have them purchase this new mailbox so that, once they start, they've already got the new T4 Next Generation. If the carrier automatically starts delivery, then they're kind of grandfathered in, and then we are responsible for delivering. So I have to stay on the carriers and the supervisor to hold those carriers accountable to make sure they're notifying us as we have changes, as we have broken mailboxes, so that we can move forward with this change management idea of larger mailboxes and CBUs.
Is there a requirement to move mailboxes to the curb? So you can...
Not at this time. Obviously, we have bills in the House and Congress, HR 756s, one such bill. We are trying to, the postal service as a whole is trying to get the approval from the Postal Regulatory Commission to be able to govern ourselves so that we can raise prices, so that we can move mailboxes. Right now, we don't have that authority, so if somebody has a mailbox at their house, I personally, as a postmaster, cannot say, you have to move it to the curb, because they've always had that delivery. They will continue that mode of delivery until such a time where the government or the Postal Regulatory Commission gives us the approval. Eventually, it will happen. It will happen, but I can't tell you if that's a year or five years, maybe 10 years from now. So no, if you have a mailbox at your door, you don't have to change it, you don't have to move it to the street. However, if you have a mailbox at your door and your house sells, before we start delivery to that next person, we can pull it from the door, put it on the street. Again, the frustrating portion of that is then the carrier is going to be walking along, delivering, and then all of a sudden, they have to go out to the street, deliver to a curbside box, and then go back up to the houses, and that's frustrating for the carrier because it adds time to them. So we have been trying to encourage the carriers so that we can slowly start transitioning. It does take years and years to really do that, the transition from the house to the curb.
Are there questions? So now we're informed. Very good.
All right.
We'll put links on our website to the, to the, there's the developer's handbook as well as the, kind of the home delivery for the T4 size.
Correct. I have, I have copies for everyone, if you'd like to look them over. Not only of the Builders and Developers Guide, I have a copy of the links for the T4 Next Generation, the dimensions on it, and a little bit more about the T4 Next Generation. I have my business card. If y'all want to, if you have questions later on and you'd like to give me a call, please, by all means, call me up or walk across the street. I'm, I'm right there.
Are you also, just in case carriers miss people, sometimes homes get sold without a sign ever going up. Are you talking to realtors in town and letting them know too, or?
You know, that's a fantastic idea. No, I hadn't thought of that, but yeah, that's definitely...
Chamber lunch would be a really good...
A chamber lunch. Okay.
Judy's always looking for somebody to...
Come and talk.
Come and talk.
Okay. Well, who wants my, who wants my business card? Because...
I'll give one to Judy.
I'll give you a couple, Jeff, and then you can contact me and let me know, and I would be more than willing to come out and talk to the realtors and the chamber also. I mean, I'm, I'm right now currently, I've been here for about a year and a half, and I have been remiss in, in getting to know some of the businesses and getting involved with the town, but now I am trying to be a little bit more involved with the village of Oregon. You know, I'm already involved with the soccer and baseball with my children, so now I'm trying to get more involved with the chamber and the village board, so you know what's going on with the postal service, and I know what's going on with the village.
Can you tell me about, how much does one of the T4 boxes cost?
The prices they had at Doran True Value, I think I looked at one that said 150, which is extremely expensive. I'm not sure exactly. When I went online and was trying to find a T4, because, again, this is not even the right size, I was trying to find a T4, and I was struggling, so it's, it's gonna be difficult for me to get that T4 in when I, I couldn't even find one as an example. So right now, that's what I'm working on, so I don't have a definitive answer on a price. There it is, right there. 7433.
74 dollars. Yeah, it's a little, probably a little more than your standard.
So, yeah, it's, it's more than a standard box.
And then if you have to mount it on a post and put it in the ground and all that?
Correct.
Okay.
And it does get a little bit pricey. It does.
Okay.
I think it's gonna take a little while for even the stores and everyone else to just catch up a little bit to...
Correct.
To where the post office is wanting to go.
Right. And this is coming down nationally and from headquarters as far as growth management's concerned. I am just trying to get my village, my post office, a little bit more involved in starting with that change management before they come down and say, hey, you can't add any deliveries at all, because right now, that is the struggle. When we go to our postmaster meetings, we're trying to add deliveries as there are developments, not just here in Oregon, but everywhere, and our PUM group, and we're getting the same thing, all the postmasters, we're all getting told the same thing. You can't add that development, or you can't add that delivery because they haven't gone to a CBU. You have to do CBUs. You have to do the T4 Next Generation. It has to be four on a post, and we're like, wait a minute. When did this start? Because we were not part of this initiative, and now our hands are being tied, and they're saying, okay, you don't have a choice now, we won't add that delivery. So then we have customers moving in, and we're not allowed to deliver their mail because growth management hasn't approved them using an old mailbox because they weren't, you know, they were there long before growth management, like some of our development. You know, right now, I'm, I'm working with developers where we're gonna be putting in mailboxes, the copper mailboxes in Bergamot and another subdivision where we're gonna be doing regular mailboxes because they were final-platted long before growth management started telling us we can't do it. So it will, it will take time.
Can I ask another question too? Well, as far, the post office, I'm pretty sure has regulations about how people can decorate mailboxes too? Like, are there any, I'm just trying to figure out, like, as these come out in the village, we may have to look at, like...
I, we're not real picky on the decorations. As long as it meets the dimensions, you can have your little boats and all the other, you know, there's one out there that's...
I'm just picturing the one person in the neighborhood who puts something on it, and people are like, huh, you know, or whatever. I just didn't know if you have regulations or...
Right. We do have regulations on, you know, how it's supposed to be installed. I will say, we don't necessarily have regulations on how you decorate it. However, we do like to encourage people not to put plants and flowers around their mailbox, reason being bees. And so every day when that carrier comes out there and goes to deliver, they get stung, and I personally purchase Hornet Noir spray and give it to my carriers so they can spray people's mailboxes because they will get stung. People don't think about that. It looks beautiful. Don't get me wrong. It looks beautiful. However, it's not functional when that person's out there every day sticking their arm out and opening and closing it, and they're getting stung. If that answers your question.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Brandy. We appreciate the update.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item D. Village Board will hold a public hearing regarding consideration of application for license renewal, class B for Metamalt Beverages for Orcon LLC by Jennifer L. White, agent, just Pizza Pit at 130 North Main Street in Oregon, and there's possible board action. So item one, I will open the hearing. There's a note that this...
Steve, I don't actually think we need to do that.
Oh.
Right, Matt?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. So I go right to number two?
Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, that's fine.
What's two is to the...
Village Attorney reviews state statutes with the village board?
I think, I think Matt's got a few things to say about the, we have received some new material and some actual...
Yeah, I'll just briefly for the board. On June 15, Friday, we received some additional materials submitted by the applicant, basically a new application, and also a resolution adopted by the applicant here, is Orcon LLC. And I think you all recall, the issue we ran into is that a member of that LLC had arrest and conviction record that created a question mark about whether the LLC was qualified to hold a license. We've received a resolution adopted by that LLC, the members of that LLC that has removed that member, that person as a member of the LLC. So that removes the disqualifying element.
Okay.
And so, to my knowledge, there was no other issue with the application, and I actually have a slightly revised...
You go ahead, Matt.
I have a suggested motion... I have a suggested motion for the board to consider. It would be a motion to recognize the application submitted by Orcon LLC on July 15, 2018, as an amendment to the April 26, 2018 application.
July 15?
I'm sorry, June. June 15. To recognize the application submitted by Orcon LLC on June 15, 2017, as an amendment to the April 26, 2018 application for renewal of its Class B license and to, and to approve the renewal of that license. So it's a two-part motion. It's to recognize this application as an amendment to the application for renewal and to approve the renewal. Two parts.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
So there, how do we resolve the issue? So, in my attempt to be consistent, there was, there was an issue of reporting, if I remember right, that went, that went something along the lines of that there was a lack of reporting of some, of, of an incident that occurred. Am I right?
Yes. I know, I know exactly the issue you're speaking to, and we evaluated that from a legal standpoint. We've come to the conclusion that there's a difference between how that issue is, is available for the board's consideration at the time of an application for a new license, and it can be considered in connection with whether, whether to approve a new license. We think that that issue is not present at renewal, at least under, as our ordinances are currently drafted. The, in order to not renew a license, you have to have grounds for non-renewal. Grounds would have to be either a violation of Chapter 125 of the Wisconsin statutes or a violation of our ordinance. We don't have anything specifically in our ordinances that addresses that issue, so I don't believe that would be grounds for non-renewal here, that, that there was a failure to accurately report that information.
But had it been a new application.
Had it been a new application, that would have been something the board could have considered. Because when you're dealing with renewal, we have a very limited basis for considering non-renewal or revocation. In other words, it's, it's the same grounds that you have available to you for either revoking a license or not renewing a license. We don't think that would, would have been a basis for non-renewal. Mike brought to my attention a new statute that, that would in the future, potentially, we'll have to look at the statute, but if, if the board would like, I mean, not confuse things with the statute, if the board is concerned about that, that that's not something that can be considered in connection with renewal, then we should look at our ordinance and consider making a change to it.
Yeah, so from my personal perspective, my head's getting a little bit dizzy.
Yeah.
With regards to what I can, can't, should, shouldn't do, right? And, and in my opinion, is that if somebody forgets or, or somehow doesn't remember to report an incident.
Yep.
To me, that's not automatically an issue of character. And I think I've been pretty consistent with regard to that. I just need to make sure that I have the, that I have the authority to use my judgment, and that, and that I'm not being compelled to vote in a specific way because we've decided that it's a character issue, and for that reason, it's an automatic disqualifier. So you've answered my question for me. But I am looking forward to future conversations so that I can get my mind straight on, on where my scope of authority lies and where, where it begins and ends.
And we'll have a discussion, so we clarify that, both for us and for applicants.
Yeah, it's good.
I think it's a fairly simple way to do that. So we have the motion second to approve the renewal application for Orcon LLC.
Okay, in Jennifer, yep.
Discussion, questions?
Is, is anybody here from Orcon? Well, besides Jeff? Is the, is the member that actually has applied?
The applicant is not here.
No.
The, 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 the post agent is.
From Mike, I mean.
Is it Jennifer?
Jennifer.
Right? So there's no one here that I know of formally representing the applicant. That's not a requirement.
So also, because this is what we suggested to the applicant to do, they did what we asked them to do, that I think they feel that they're out, their licensing to get renewed.
They removed the disqualifying issue.
Yep.
Yeah, so again, it was made clear to them, this is what you have to, they've done that, so they felt that there's no need to be here tonight, so. It's kind of where it is.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, me too.
Seems pretty straightforward now.
The questions have been removed by what's been done, so, in my mind. Any further questions or comments? So we have the motion second to approve this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Item seven is approval minutes. We have number four tonight. Item eight is vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, in the amount of $467,003.66 for approval.
Move approval.
Second. Questions?
I have a question. Bartel Enterprises, water patches due to water.
Water main breaks. Yeah, when, when we have a water main break, we call in an asphalt paving company to come in and repatch the asphalt.
Oh, so that's for the road.
Yeah, this is roadway patching, and this is, this was taking care of water main breaks that we experienced over the winter. So it was like, I think, four patches.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other one is Oregon Chamber of Commerce fireworks donation. Did we take action on that in the past?
It's in the, it's, it's been in the budget for the last.
Okay, so this is a budgeted item?
This is, yep.
All right. Then I don't have a question.
Okay.
And I'm done. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, we have vouchers, in the amount of $467,003.66 for approval. Roll call, please.
Steven?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ollie?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item nine is community input. We'll proceed to item eight, Proca Mason Announcements. Item A, board comments, anyone? Okay. Item B, staff comments.
Mentioned the groundbreaking for the youth center on June 28. And then I note on here that Jennifer Way's first day will be July 2nd. We'll welcome her to the Village on, no, she's a Village Rose, but to the Village Organization on July 9th, and then I, I think, I thank, you know, Mary Davidson on behalf of the Village Board for her efforts in leadership during, during this period when she was, you know, serving as the interim director, so. And then we have two election days that are coming up, August 14th and November 6th. And the new thing I have on here is Lisa and I are trying to work on the, the budget schedule that we can show you at the next board meeting. And we're trying to not have the, the budget hearing the, the week of Thanksgiving because it's been a little bit difficult recently getting quorum that, that Monday sometimes. So we were trying to have it on November 12th, so we, we sort of worked backwards, and which means that we would have to have a, first, the, the first budget meeting would be on the 8th, and the second one would be on the 15th, but then the third one would be on a Wednesday, October 17th. It also, I think it's easier not, if we could, not combining a budget meeting with, with the regular board meeting. It's just, it makes it a long, a long night, I think. So do these dates, at this point, look okay to you?
Couldn't find the kid.
Okay. And then upcoming, no, no board meeting on July 2nd, and then the, so next board meeting will be on July 9th, and then we're having a, a pretty long committee meeting on the 16th. Quite a few things on the agenda, and then a, a board meeting on the 23rd, so.
Thank you. Anything else from staff? Anyone? Okay. Item 11, communication and miscellaneous business. Item A, Van de Waals parking initiative cost proposal will be discussed at the 7th, July 16, 2018 special committee meeting, and that's for information only at this time.
Yep.
Item B, discussion and possible action regarding selecting local Oregon bank for J.C. Park West fundraising deposits. And this says information is available at the meeting, and we do have, that's information at our place, and I'd go down to the staff recommendation. It looks like Oregon Community Bank and Union Bank and Trust are pretty much in the same place, according to Lisa. So I think there's a couple of options here, as Lisa noted, I talked with her, to her this morning about that. One is to just go on the highest interest rate, or since the cost of the square is unknown, split the deposits between Union Bank and Trust and Oregon Community Bank. You know, banks want to, you know, they want to serve these organizations, and they also want the, it's good public relations, so. I just personally, right now, I like the idea of doing two banks.
So there's a one, there's one small note that I wanted to cover with Lisa. When I, the way I'm reading this, and I don't know if that's the way this was intended, Oregon Community Bank is willing to cover any setup expense related to the square, whereas Union Bank and Trust is willing to give us $500 to be used to offset any square fees. That could include setup, it could include 2% fees.
Correct.
So really, Union Bank and Trust has a stronger bid with a rate of 1.67% and, and a $500 contribution to the Village.
Yeah, I, we didn't really know what the setup fees were going to be for each of the different banks, and from one of the banks, it said, you know, it depends on, there's just a lot of unknowns as to how much the cost would be. So that's why I just listed it as they had sent it and presented it to me.
So for that reason, I would make a motion that we accept Union Bank and Trust bid.
Second that.
So Lisa, are you saying that the bid that Jeff indicates is superior? Do you agree with that statement?
If, if you're basing on interest only, U B and T has a higher interest rate that they, that they'll be paying.
Okay.
Than Oregon Community Bank.
Okay, but there are other intangibles, right?
Correct. I mean, the, the square, we don't know how much it's going to be used. You know, there's an initial setup cost for that. They didn't really elaborate on the cost because it depends on how many users you have. There's a lot of variables with it. So it's really hard to determine how much the square is actually going to end up costing us. But with the $500, it may cover a lot of the costs in the future. I don't know if it's going to cover more than setup fees.
How do you feel about splitting the, the deposits?
I'd say it's whatever the board wants to do.
No, no, no. I mean, is that extra work for staff?
So here's the challenge, right? If you split the deposits between two banks, Lisa's got to reconcile two different accounts.
Well, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, that's automatically extra work.
I'm trying to ask for that.
And the other challenge that I have is we have more than two banks in town. You know, Old National's in town, and so State Bank across Plains, so.
They did respond.
Well, State Bank across Plains is right here.
Yeah, State Bank across Plains did. They were, they were the only three that we.
That would mean two square accounts too, though, and that's not smart.
Exactly. Yeah, you would be paying for two square fees.
Okay, I was trying to allude to.
Right.
It'll be extra work for staff. Is that, if we went to more than one bank?
It would be extra work.
Okay. Thanks, that's all I was trying to get at.
You're doing a great job, though, of deferring to the board's judgment, Lisa. I appreciate that. You're walking a fine line. Mike, you do that all the time, like an expert, so.
Teaching her.
Learning.
Well done. Well done, Sensei.
How much extra work would it be? Enough to be a problem?
It, it's hard to say. It depends on if we get a bunch of money on it all in at once.
Yeah, we're talking about, you know, the, so the use of the square, for example, you know, are we going to, will we use it, will Lisa use it at the fundraiser in August, and then will other people just give us checks? It, it's just, it's impossible to know that. And so I think when Lisa, I'm going to be speaking for you, but when Lisa wrote the memo, you just tried to, forget about trying to figure out the square cost. Go back to Jeff's point, what's the highest interest rate? And, and I think if we would have had time during that four-hour board meeting when this first came up, I should have probably just said that. I thought, well, why don't we forget about the confusion maybe about trying to project the square use and just look at the interest rate? And, but, but then again, you know, we were trying to be fair, because we thought both banks were pretty close. They're both local banks, and we wanted to be fair to everyone, so.
So when we, well, when the fundraising is done for this project, when, I mean, it's, it's conceivable that we could tell people, you know, if you give cash or check, then we get all of that money as opposed to if you pay with a credit card, they're going to take a percentage. I, I think a lot of people would be sensitive to that and think, oh, well, then I'll just write you a check. I mean, that's how I've, in fundraising in the things I've been part of in the past, that's what we said to people, and we mostly got cash and checks as a result of that.
True point. But then some people want to do it to get their points too, so.
Right. And, and we would, I wouldn't say, I, we want to have that option for sure. We're not, we don't want to turn away money if people want to give it.
Exactly.
But I don't think the.
So it may, it may be used very little, it's possible.
I would, yeah, I would, I would say it's probably going to be used less, much less than cash and check.
And that's what we thought. I mean, we're thinking that it's probably going to be used at some of the big fundraisers if there's a silent auction and people are paying a lot of money towards whatever it is that they're bidding on.
Further questions or comments?
So what's the motion again?
To approve Union Bank and Trust.
Okay.
And, you know, say once again, I think it's close enough for me. I, I would like to do two banks. They're both local. And they separated from the one other bid and the other two bids, so.
So are, would you be saying, like, using the square would go for one bank and the other one would just be cash and check or something? How would you divide that up?
Lisa, what would you recommend there?
Never thought about that, just using the square at one bank instead of having that fee at both banks.
I think that's just going to be too much extra work for staff.
It would just be one deposit, we'd be coming in, just basically splitting it, writing out two deposit slips and taking them to the separate banks, is what I envisioned, but in trying to keep them kind of balanced as we go.
Yeah. That feels like more work to me.
It, it would be more work.
I kind of like the Union Bank and Trust idea, personally.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, so the motion to approve Union Bank and Trust for this account, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, so we'll go to.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, staff. Item C, additional donation of $5,500 from the 5K Partnership for the Kelstrom Memorial Park.
This is, this is great. You know, that Judy had spoken, or spoken with the Kelstrom family, and they've always been very supportive, and, and she just let them know that there were, the project had come in a little higher, and one of the items we were, that the park board and village board had to cut out were the column treatments, and she said she would approach them, and they were more than willing to, to contribute towards that. So I think it'll be, it's a nice finish to that, so.
Yeah.
Do you remember what the total?
Just really thank them, they've been extremely, I mean, obviously, it's, it's to their, you know, they want to honor Gary Kelstrom, but, or, Elvin, excuse me, but, yeah, it's a nice, very nice thing, and I think we should definitely thank them for that.
Yeah, it'd be a very nice area.
This is in addition to, I believe it was $6,000 that they donated before, so.
So how much is the total cost of that project?
I think it's about 100, I haven't looked at it recently, it'd be about 100,000, 100 to 110,000 dollars.
So I did notice too, this is kind of adjacent, but I think last time we were discussing the possibility of water, well, water, water fountain and possibly a bike repair station, and I noticed that while we weren't able to make that happen here, that there's a bike repair station now over by.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. I forgot, I should have brought that up. Thank you for bringing that up.
This is in addition to, I believe it was $6,000 that they donated before, so.
So how much is the total cost of that project?
I think it's about 100, I haven't looked at it recently, it'd be about 100,000, 100 to 110,000 dollars.
So I did notice too, this is kind of adjacent, but I think last time we were discussing the possibility of water, well, water, water fountain and possibly a bike repair station. And I noticed that while we weren't able to make that happen here, that there's a bike repair station now over by.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff.
The bike loop.
I forgot, I should have brought that up, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about that. We installed that a couple of weeks ago, right before Memorial Day weekend. It's a, it's a bike fix-it station, heavy-duty pump, and then a message.
You have tools?
Yep, it's really kind of cool.
Where is this?
Huh?
Where is this?
At the Keller Alpine Park parking lot, where the park, where the bike path kind of goes off in different directions, so.
That's exciting.
Yeah, I meant, I meant to put on agenda, thank you. I meant to, you know, it was, Jeff took the lead on this and then the whole work staff installed and did a great job. We even have the porta potty on a concrete pad now.
Yep.
I know, we're moving up in the world. I had to add that.
That's D-Lux, that's what we're talking about.
Can we put that, like, on the village Facebook page or something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've been meaning to.
That'd be cool.
I've been meaning to.
No, not the porta potty.
No, no, I.
The bike repair station.
Bill Livick right now is at home going headline, porta potty on, porta potty on concrete.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, that's cool.
Yeah, no, it, it looks really nice.
I've been meaning to do that.
I took some pictures and I'll send them to you.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item D, police department reports. Are there any questions here or anything you'd like to note for us, Chief?
Um, we remain busy, as you can see through, I don't know if you have any questions on the canine activity at all. That's pretty self-explanatory, the summary of major crimes. You can see that we still have our share of OWIs. You'll also notice that there are several THC arrests in there. So the guys are out doing a great job of staying busy and catching violators.
What are we doing to, to crack down on over-serving? Is there anything, any particular initiatives that the police department is entertaining?
Well, we started the, the consultation with a police officer with licensed establishments, provided them with information. I don't know that there's anything been specifically done with over-serving as of yet, but that's certainly something that the police department and the board is going to have to take a look at here in the future.
I wanted to quickly say that I love the APM Facebook post, remind everybody to close their garage doors. That's been.
Yes, Sergeant Lucass is doing a great job with that, and he sets up automatic reminders. And that, that continues to be a problem. I don't remember who I was telling today, but, you know, 27 was here interviewing the victims of a burglary where the person just walked into their garage, walked into the house and grabbed a set of keys. And that's, again, that was at like 10:30 at night. So, you know, as we can remind people to close their garages and lock their cars, these crimes of opportunities aren't, you know, they're going to continue to decrease, so.
Did, um, did we have any injuries as a result of the battery to the police officer?
Uh, no, we did not have any injury to the officer then. That was by an extremely intoxicated person, so. She was very resistive and very hot of sorts, I'll put it that way. It wasn't just, it was drugs and alcohol, so, but no injuries, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Item E, discussion of possible action, Dane County Community Restorative Court, recommend a motion to approve Dane County Community Restorative Court memorandum of understanding contingent on village attorney's review. So we need that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I, I put a, the chief sent me an email from Ron Johnson, from the, from county. And he was responding to Judge Cox's concerns, and just to make sure the board saw that in your folder.
Those concerns, were they made formally through the board or only in the Oregon Observer?
The, the letter that was in the, that was in the packet was sent to, I don't know if it was sent just to, just to Steve?
Yeah, I was out of the country when this came my way, so, and a lot of touches on this stuff.
So I didn't know if it had gone through, just you and after board.
Yeah. So basically, this is a program that happens in Dane County Court as opposed to a local court. So it does impact what's been happening with Judge Cox in their municipal court.
Well, that, that depends on the jurisdiction. There are, there are.
Explain the tenant, so.
Yeah, so some, some municipalities, like Sunprey, for example, they do send some of their municipal citations to restorative court. I, I think, as I've mentioned a couple of times, that wasn't necessarily my intention with the restorative court in Oregon itself. I think Judge Cox does a great job of working with the victims and trying to make sure that they, that she either imposes the fine if she needs to or works with the victim, and they work out some other sentence or some other structure, something restorative. So the suspect itself may be able to work that off and not actually receive that citation. And so I think that's been working pretty well here in Oregon. My intent was, when I brought this up, was that this would be more to do with circuit court misdemeanors, that type of thing, with the DA's office and their lack of ability to actually prosecute crimes right now, so.
Yeah, that was actually your comment, was, you know, that there's a concern that crimes are going unprosecuted at the county level.
Right.
Circuit court level.
Yep.
And that this would help close that gap.
Well, it gives them an option rather than just straight dismiss the case. It gives them another option to, to provide some justice for the victims.
Yep.
How many cases, I don't know, could you have used this on or in the last month or year? What, what do you anticipate, how much do you anticipate using this program each month or year? How many offenders?
I, I haven't really sat down and thought about the numbers wise. I can tell you, based on one of the reports that I saw through the DA's office, that they've dismissed over 500 felony cases alone. And then the misdemeanors were even higher than that. I believe that was in 2017. So how many of those cases are from Oregon? I can tell you, I can tell you that I get quite a few decline cases from the DA on a weekly basis, so.
Really?
Yeah, absolutely.
Due to lack of capacity to prosecute?
Yeah, that, I mean, there, DA, Ozan, Ozan Ozan, I don't remember how to pronounce his name, but.
Ishmael Ozan.
Yeah, he, some people say Ozan, some people say Ozan.
It's Ozan, I'm related to him.
Oh, there you go.
It's my husband's second cousin. It's Ozan.
Ozan.
For the record.
Very good. He'll, he'll, he's repeatedly said that he's understaffed, he's at 1985 staffing levels, and they have to do what they can to, to try and get through the most important cases. And sometimes they just can't get to these misdemeanor crimes.
Just a quick question for the chief.
Yeah, go ahead, man.
My recollection is that it, it's the police department's call as to whether to refer to this program or to, say, municipal court, for example, like.
Yeah, if it's municipal, yes.
If it's municipal, if the, if the village chooses to approve the memorandum of understanding, then it would be the police department's judgment call as to whether to press, press, have something processed through municipal court or through this program?
Yeah, that would be something that we'd have to try to, to work out with the courts and how we're going to do that.
Okay. And then as to criminal matters, you would refer the charges to the DA? And then if the village is participating in this program, then the DA could choose to refer this to this program as opposed to prosecution?
Correct, yep.
Just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, that's right, good summary. Further comments or questions? So we have motion second to approve the Dane County Community Restorative Court memorandum of understanding contingent on the village attorney's review, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item F, discussion of possible action regarding authorized hiring of municipal accountant/special projects position at the 2018 hourly rate of $20.87. There's a note in the village administrator. The police background should be completed within the next two weeks on the candidate. As we have done recently, the village board could authorize the chair of personnel, public safety and protection committee, and village administrator to approve the hiring of the new position or schedule special board meeting before the next board meeting on July 9th, so.
I'll make that motion for discussion.
Thank you.
Or a second motion?
No, we need, that's a motion, we need a second.
I made the motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Question, is this a new position in the budget?
Nope, no, it's, it's a same position. The only thing we've changed is we added special projects to the accountant position. It's a budgeted position.
Colony's have been vacant.
Um, it's actually not vacant, it's just when some, the person that is in this position, I guess, I mean, Lisa should be answering this, sorry.
So the position that was vacant was the deputy clerk position, which has been vacant for a year.
Okay.
And we had an internal candidate, somebody from our office, take that position, which opened up another position. So after all the shakedown, this is the position, and they're all budgeted that we are, that we're recruiting for.
Okay, is there any fiscal impact in doing this?
No, it's all in the budget.
It's all budgeted?
Yeah, it's all budgeted. I mean, the positions, positions were all budgeted this year.
Right.
We're just working on trying to get them filled.
Very good, thank you.
And we've done this two other times, we allowed Jeannie and me to. Once I get the police background report from the police department, then I contact Jeannie and I talked to her about it, and it's worked out twice the last two.
No, that's, that's.
No, I just want to make sure the board knew me, done this before, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Okay, go ahead.
Well, the, the comment I was going to make, is it Kevin, is the person that you hired in the last position?
No, that was John.
John?
Yeah.
Um, I got some feedback that he's doing outstanding job.
Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so the motion second to authorize hiring of municipal accountant/special projects position at the hourly rate of $20.87. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item G, discussion of possible action about the public works position, recommend a motion, authorize public works to advertise, solicit applications, and interview for a public works crew position.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, this is with Dan retiring, I'm planning on, we'll shift someone from our public works crew. Staff has expressed interest in to stepping up into the parks position. So we'd like to do that internally, which would leave a void in our crew position area. So we just want to be able to advertise and hire for that. I think we have a few good candidates already that are still interested from when we hired for the water and sewer position. But we wanted to open it up just because this is slightly different qualifications this time around. So just so we make sure that we keep it open for all applicants.
Any questions? We have motion second to authorize public works to advertise, solicit applications, and interview for the public works crew position, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item H, discussion of possible action regarding 2018 street resurfacing and maintenance. We have two motions here. The first one is approval of Payne and Dolan for contract A of the 2018 street resurfacing and maintenance contract for the base bid items and also alternate bid items three and four with a total award amount of $380,313.80. Funding to be from the approved 2018 budget and previous year's borrowing.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions, discussion?
It's all within budget, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion two, approval of Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC for contract B of the 2018 street resurfacing and maintenance contract, maintenance contract for the base bid items and also alternate bid items of 1B1 to 1B10 for a total contract amount of $105,489, funding from the approved 2018 budget and previous year's borrowing.
So.
Second.
Thank you.
So, quick question.
Yeah.
Jeff, did these go onto bid?
Yes, yeah.
So back to Bartel and the job that they do for us, helping to kind of patch the water main breaks?
Yeah.
Did they bid on this at all?
Bartel did not, that's, that's not their, Bartel kind of specializes in smaller projects and then things like driveways and, you know, some, they, the players that bid on this, like, were Wolf paving, Payne and Dolan. They'll, they'll do the mill and overlay. The seal coder people are even, I almost say smaller, but smaller outfits that would do just the crack filling and seal coating and stuff like that. So, yeah, that's why we separated it into two contracts.
Further questions or comments? So we have motion second to approve Farner Asphalt Sealers for contract B of the 2018 street resurfacing and maintenance contract for the base bid items and alternate bid items, bid, alternate bid items 1B1 to 1B10 for a total contract amount of $105,489, and that's from the 2018 budget and previous year's borrowing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item I, discussion of possible action regarding 2017 compliance maintenance annual report. I recommend motion, adopt resolution number 18-25, accepting the 2017 compliance maintenance annual report for submission to Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. This is our yearly.
Yearly report?
Top-notch report, right?
Yep, top-notch report. I just, I always want to take this opportunity just to thank our staff at the Waisar tree plant, they work hard. Cal and Sunny and Jim work really hard over there and do a nice job to keep us in compliance.
Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item J, review of investments, connection fees, impact fees, and building permits.
Looks like building permits are ahead of, well, have set last year, so.
Thank you, Ray.
Any other comments or questions? We will go on to item K, Lake of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance 2017 dividend payment of $11,051 to the village. This will help cover the village's safety program in 2018. Have we gotten this every year?
Yes, we have.
Okay, item L, discussion of possible action, declare police equipment, department equipment surplus, recommend motion, approve declaring police departments to Varda alarms as surplus and the radio shop recycle them.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. They're just really old, right?
They're very old. When we went over to the 800 trucking system with the radios, they became obsolete, so we can't even sell them to anybody else because they can't use them, no radios, so.
I would guess one of these is one I had in my house many, many years ago.
I, I couldn't even tell you how old they were, and as a matter of fact, the guy from the radio shop couldn't even tell us how old they were. They couldn't even find out who the manufacturers were and who to contact.
Sounds like it probably was in Steve's house.
I thought you were going to say you can't tell how old I am, but.
I leave those jokes for Jeff. I leave those jokes for Jeff, so.
Yeah, that's wise. Okay, so we have that motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item A, report of committees, since we've done that. So we get to turn the page. Their minutes not requiring action, there's the Oregon Area Fire EMS Commission, May 3rd, 2018 commission minutes, proposed 2019 capital purchases and the draft 2017 audit.
You know, the one comment I've got is I really want the board to make sure that they're paying attention to the capital purchases, you know, because there's some really big ticket items that are coming down the pipe. And I, Mike and Lisa have been doing an awesome job of working with chief on that. But I just want to make sure the board's aware so that when Lisa and Mike come and ask to borrow, we're not surprised.
And we'll talk about this, I'm sorry. And we're going to talk about this more at the July 10th, sorry, 10th, joint meeting with the towns.
Yeah, and more than anything, I would just say broad brush, you know, we did a lot, we did a lot with nothing for about 10 years to get us through the recession and to get the fire districts built back up again. And it's just time to invest in the infrastructure for a lot of reasons. One, the infrastructure's aging and in some cases obsolete. But another is, you know, money is cheap right now, and so if we're going to need to buy engines for the next 10, 15 years, now's the time to do it, not five, 10 years from now.
And Jeff, thanks for keeping us up to date on those things. Item 14, unfinished business, there is none. 15 is new business, approval of pending new operator licenses. These are recommended for approval by the police department at headquarters, Aubrey Cobbleman, Jenna Keizer, and Sabrina Panariella. At the Legend of Bergamot, Zach Neal, and Stop and Go, Tyler Werper first, need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval pending renewal operator licenses, again, recommended by the police department at Ace's main tab, Stacy Dixon, Melissa Francois, Sheila Larson, and Aaron Mant. At the Chocolate Keeper, Elizabeth Donahue, Wendy Fordrain, Cayman Hale, and Kaylee Lesnar. At headquarters, Natasha Croissant, Marcia Scott, and Heather Taylor. Legend of Bergamot, Kylie Reinhardt, Mulligan's, Erin Valley, and Stop and Go, Howard Lorette.
So I'm going to make a motion, but I have a question.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Chief, do we scrub the names of individuals that have been cited for serving underage persons against the list of renewals? Because I can't remember who the names are.
Yeah, when we do a background, that will come up.
And that would be, would that be a recommendation that you would make to the board, or would that just be a footnote?
That would be information that I would present to the board.
Probably a new memo, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, good question, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then approval of pending renewal operator licenses, memo provided by the police department, Mulligan's, Jeffrey Lyon.
So Luke presented a, presented a memo, kind of like we were talking about, just not the same charges, where he apparently left off a citation. So, you know, whether that doesn't look like it's necessarily tied to serving, but I thought he would bring that to your attention.
And I'll just mention, this is again in the context of a renewal, as I understand it. This is an application for renewal of an existing license. So I think we're in a different position than we would be if it was an application for a new license. If we wanted to not renew this, we'd have to give notice of the board's intent to not renew and schedule it for a hearing. And I don't, based on my review of our ordinance, I don't think this would qualify as grounds for non-renewal. This kind of is back to the discussion we had earlier. If that's a concern that the board has, you know, we can look at the ordinance and make an adjustment. But at least at this point, I don't think the failure to include this information on, on the application would be a violation of our ordinance that would then constitute grounds for non-renewal.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a list of future agenda items, and item 17 is a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion, second.
All. Why is this one always takes so long? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's okay, the words are.
Because we're already packed.